What did he say about the audio, anything, or is it just the video?
He said just the video.
He said the video be chopping. So you might be able to at least off the meeting and get us going.
But if anybody is on the Zoom, it's gonna be okay.
I'm gonna ask him to do a wide shot on the board.
We're all set.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of November 9th, 2022. This is a hybrid meeting. People watching this may have some distortion in the video portion. Our techs are working on that right now to see if it can be cured during the meeting. If it cannot, the meeting will be posted after it's over. And the picture should be okay at that point in time. But while it's being done live, there is, at least for the time, being a problem with the video portion. But we'll do our best to see if we can get it resolved as quickly as we can. This is a hybrid meeting, so the following notice must be read into the record. This is the formally advised that is required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency signed into law on June 16th, 2021. As extended by special legislation dated July 16th, 2022, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And on our website, the Zoom instructions are posted. Tonight, we will be dealing with a preview of our special town meeting articles. That is our only business that we will be conducting tonight. And these articles will be the same articles that will be presented at our formal meeting on November 15th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Maddick East Middle School in West Yarmouth. So please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So to begin with, I understand that we have a series of slide presentations. And our Assistant Town Administrator is gonna take us through those. We have department heads whose departments will be affected by various articles, who are here to answer questions. Our Town Administrator is also here as a resource to answer questions, as well as the members of the Board of Selectmen. So.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. The Board should have the presentation in front of you. It's similar to the three past town meetings we've been using in terms of formatting. We can begin the town meeting with moderator open the meeting. And there are instructions during that portion, so this allows the audience to understand the opening of the meeting and the steps. And then the moderator's guidance. First article is prior year bills. The Board has seen this before. This is a prior year bill that after the books were closed, it was not able to be paid. And the explanation is on the next page. Mr. Chairman, if you want to have question period after each one, or? These are some of these.
I would hope we don't have any questions on Article 1. We have to pay the bill.
As a formatting. So this is a nine tenths vote, which separates it from all the other articles.
That's fine. Let's go to 2.
And I'm having technical difficulties. Article 2 is for a fire hydrant for the police training center to meet certain code requirements. There needs to be a hydrant in proximity to some of the training center facilities, and that's $10,000. The Board of Selectmen recommended 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0.
The explanation simply, I guess, is that it is the hydrants required by code for fire safety.
Correct.
It has to be done. I don't think there's gonna be any questions on that one. If there are, we'll entertain them. But let's go to 3.
Article 3 is to transfer from free cash to sum of $9,555.68 in opioid settlement expenses account. The expense related to substance abuse prevention or take action thereto. Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0. And these funds are typically used for substance abuse programs in the community. Believe these types of funds funded the beach event and other events that were held regarding substance abuse.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on 3?
I would just offer a little comment by way of background that the opioid settlement will provide approximately $275,000 directly to support the town's substance abuse efforts. And these funds will be distributed over a 17-year period. So while we don't get the funds upfront, at least it's good to have an ongoing revenue source that will be expended under the direction of the Substance Abuse Committee for their programming. So we'll be seeing these types of articles that take the annual portion. This year, it was $9,555, I believe. And we'll distribute that directly into our accounts to support the Substance Abuse Committee's efforts.
Okay. Anybody else? Next article, please.
Tidewide Energy and Fuel, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash to sum of $125,000 to the 421 DPW Administration Engineering Account. And this is for additional costs associated with fuel costs. Board of Selectmen recommended 5-0, Finance Committee recommended 4-0. Jeff Colby, the DPW Director, is here if you have any questions.
Yes, Vida.
Let me see. $125,000.
Just go up to one of the microphones, please. Either that one or the one in front, whichever.
Vida Morris, this $125,000 would cover what period of time?
Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. That's for the current fiscal year we're in. That's about 20% of our fuel usage. And as you can see at the pumps, the cost has gone up for fuel. That's also the same for the town, although we do get a wholesale price for fuel. So it's a reasonable price, but it fluctuates just like it does for homeowners. And it is just to get us through this current fiscal year, 2023.
This is in addition to the usual appropriation for such an item?
Yes.
So just for sake of reference, the fiscal year started in July 1st. It's gonna go through June 30 of 2023. And I guess you're projecting that there is gonna be a shortfall in the expense account, correct?
That's correct. It's based upon the current fuel prices, and they have stabilized somewhat, but they're starting to go back up. And the calculation for the current fiscal year was done at a much lower value for the cost of fuel.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jeff, could I just ask you a quick question? So the normal allocation is, is it about a million dollars a year that we expend for fuel?
It's not quite that amount. I don't have the budget in front of me, but it's a sizable amount. It's probably a little bit less than that for fuel specifically. If you look at all energy, it might be closer to that number.
This is just fuel, though, right?
This is just fuel, yes.
That's a 20% increase?
Correct. Approximately.
Okay. Let's go on to the next article. Bill?
Article 5 is similar in terms of addressing increasing costs. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash to sum of $125,000 to 422 DPW expense to fund vehicle maintenance expenses or take action thereto. There currently a remaining balance of $7,500 in vehicle maintenance account for fiscal year 2023, based on deferred repairs and other needs and increased costs. We'll need an additional $125,000. I'm assuming based on Jeff's statement earlier, this is also for this fiscal year.
Okay, this is a supplement to the current fiscal year's account. Yes, Vida?
Okay, so this is additional, and the usual what's been budgeted is about a million dollars again?
No, $25,000.
Who does the maintenance, our own employees, or do we hire somebody?
Yes, this was not funded this current fiscal year. There was a balance that remained in the account for supplemental vehicle maintenance. It's typically funded at between $50,000 and $100,000, but it was not funded this particular year. We are out of it at this point. When this article was written, the balance was $7,500. But I will tell you, it's just about zero now because we continue to spend. So this would be very important to get this approved, just to have vehicle maintenance money. This is for all vehicles within the town, not just public works vehicles. And it's a combination of both in-house labor, so there will be some component of parts associated with this, as well as contracted repairs in local service stations. Will also come out of this account as well.
So the long and short of it is we're running out of money, and we got future anticipated expenses.
Yes, and this is just to get us to the current fiscal year. We'll certainly need more repair funds in 2024.
And the explanation is stated that it is for the remainder of fiscal year 2023, based on known deferred repairs and the anticipated near-term repair needs and the increased cost of vehicles and repair parts. This is the expected amount that it will, that the department will need for the repair of the vehicles for the rest of the fiscal year, correct?
Yes, that's an excellent summary, and it's just for this fiscal year. We don't expect that it would carry much beyond this current fiscal year.
Thank you. So if we don't have anything further, I'm looking to see if we do on this article. We'll go to 6.
This is Septage Division Odor Control. Board of Selectmen voted 5-0. Finance Committee recommends 4-0. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds in the DPW Septage Retained Earnings account as sum of $25,000 for a purpose of investigating, developing recommendations for designing the replacement of the odor control system at the Septage Treatment Plant. I'm gonna stop reading there and go to the explanation. This is essentially funding for a study. The Septage Division proposes to replace the odor control system, which is over 30 years old. This article will fund the odor control system's study. And this will recommend to help focus a design effort better to understand the needs and costs with the new odor control system. So the key to this, it is not really capital work. It is a study to propose capital work. And this was recommended 5-0 by the Board of Selectmen, 4-0 by the Finance Committee.
Any questions on Article 6? $25,000 to fund an odor control study for the system at the Yarmouth Septage Treatment Facility? I guess to find out what the best remedial alternative is, correct?
Correct. The system, as indicated in the explanation, is over 30 years old and at the end of its useful life. And.
Yes, Chris Greeley has a question.
What is the $25,000 in the study? In other words, what are the costs that it would be a study would involve $25,000? Just thank you.
Jeff Colby's here to answer that question.
Yes, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, again. This is a study to determine what technology, just as the chairman indicated, would be the best approach. There's a wide variety of design costs based upon the different technologies. There is a organic media type of odor control system, a carbon-based system, as well as a chemical additive type of system. And those three different systems have vastly different design costs. So rather than just appropriate a design cost and not have sufficient funds, we want to narrow down that particular technology with this study. So this study will fund just the recommended technology. Then we'll have to do further design to design the system and then actually construction dollars. So it's a multi-step process, and this is just the first step in that process. We typically don't fund studies if we can easily accomplish a design, but this one's a little more complicated.
Thank you.
We're leaning toward one of those Christmas trees that you hang up with the cellophane around them, but it's hard getting one big enough.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so that brings us to 7, I believe.
7, where the prior article in Septage Division was a study. This is a capital expense to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and transfer from available funds in the DPW Septage Division Retained Earnings as sum of $400,000 for the purpose of replacing three vehicle scales at the Yarmouth Septage Treatment Facility. As we'll show in, so the three vehicle scales are necessary because they are obsolete at this point. And there is a photograph there showing the wear and on the vehicle scales. This is similar to the sanitation division that was replacing scales. This provides a more accurate reading by replacing the scales.
So in the explanation, it says that they are original.
General equipment.
Scales, so in the past, at the end of their useful life. Does anybody know approximately in years what that useful life was?
30, right?
Jeff, I don't think you should walk very far, Jeff, away from that microphone.
I might need to move my chair over here. That's approximately 30 years. The facility was, stood up about 91, 1991, so approximately 30 years. They get used significantly, especially in the summer season. And so the reason for the timing of this request and why we're looking for it in the fall is to get these scales replaced this winter before it gets busy again with the volume of septage that goes through the facility. This is one that we do have a bid in hand, so we're very comfortable with the amount of money that we're requesting. We just opened bids earlier this week.
Well, we anticipate that work would be done most likely next year?
It would be done right around the January timeframe. Again, we have a bid in hand, so we can award that immediately after town meeting. But there will be some submittals and design work and mobilization for the contractor that'll need to happen. But it should be, you know, happening between the end of this year and in early next calendar year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Colby, could I ask, a while back, there seemed to be some uncertainty as to whether or not we were gonna continue using the Septage Treatment Facility or whether or not we were gonna try to possibly meld it with the new facility that's coming online. I guess my question is, with these types of costs that we're starting to experience, are we committed at this point that we're gonna try to reutilize this Septage Treatment Plant for foreseeable future?
Yeah, the short answer is yes, for the foreseeable future. The current wastewater treatment facility that's being designed at 99 Buck Island Road is not being designed to receive septage immediately. That would be something for a future phase of the program, a future expansion of that facility. Is saving approximately 10% on the construction cost of a new wastewater facility not to accommodate septage at that facility immediately. It certainly could be done in the future and is planned to be done at some point in the future, but not starting in that very first phase.
Do we anticipate that would be significant capital cost to improve or revamp the Septage Treatment Facility to be able to keep utilizing it going forward?
We're looking to do capital improvements on a yearly basis, so not one big project, if you will. About eight years ago, there was a $2.5 million sizable capital project that was invested into the Septage Facility. And at that point, there wasn't sufficient revenues to cover that, so we made some adjustments in the operation to increase the profitability and to cover future costs like that. And another component with regards to improvements to that facility is to do it on a more regular basis, on a yearly basis. This is a big-ticket item, but we have been, over recent years, investing in pumps and motors and other things through the budget process, so as not to have one big capital ask. It should also be pointed out that this is coming out of Septage Retained Earnings, and it's not a big borrowing authorization. There's sufficient funds within the Septage Retained Earnings to cover this capital, as well as others that we anticipate in the future. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're gonna be talking about something a little more interesting, a little more expensive. PFOS in millions of dollars. So we're ready for Article 8.
Article 8, Mobile Reusable PFOS Treatment System, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow and transfer available funds pursuant to the Acts of 1928, Chapter 146, or Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 69B, the sum of $5 million or any other sum for the purpose of design and construction of a temporary PFOS treatment at wells number four and five, including all expenses. The Board of Selectmen recommended 5 to 0, Finance Committee 4 to 0. The motion on this, I believe, is more lengthy than the other motions because it's a borrowing article. Moving to the explanation, the Water Division proposes to design and construct a PFOS treatment system for wells four and five. In 2021, the wells number four and five exceeded the newly promulgated Massachusetts maximum contamination level for PFOS in drinking water. Proposed treatment system will allow the Water Division to return these two wells to service in the shortest time possible. And there are photographs in the presentation associated with what a possible treatment system might look like, the mobile treatment systems. Again, this is a borrowing article, and it is for predominantly purchasing the equipment. This is actually going out to bid right now in anticipation of town meeting, pending town meeting.
So if I, I'm speaking from memory, but if I understand correctly, am I right, Jeff, that this treatment system could be utilized at other well locations down the road? In other words, it's not a permanent fixed system that's gonna necessarily stay at these wells indefinitely? It can be utilized for treatment of other wells should the need arise?
Right, that's a good summary. Certainly, it's needed at these two wells in order to bring it online for next summer, which is the goal, to increase capacity within the system in a relatively short period of time. But once it's no longer needed at this location, if a permanent PFOS solution is constructed that would service these two wells, that could then be moved to other wells, which we anticipate having PFOS or other contamination problems in the future. So that's why the wording is mobile and reusable, because it can be moved around.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions or comments? I see some hands up. We'll go with Chris Greeley, and then we'll go with Tom Sullivan.
Just a quick clarification, because I always like to sit here trying to think of how we can shorten things at town meeting and help. Where are wells four and five located? That might help also people to know. Okay, thank you. But where are they located?
Jeff's gonna answer that, and then we're gonna go to Tom.
Yes, wells four and five are south of Captain's Village. So it is in an area that's relatively densely populated and homes in that area, but it's just the south of Captain's Village.
Tom Sullivan.
Hi. Got a lot of questions on this one. Those are the wells off of Forest Road, am I correct? No, they're in Captain's Village, a different one? Okay, these are PFAS, which are basically known as non-ending chemicals. So my first question is, one, what type of chemical PFAS are we looking at? And two, I have a lot of more questions. Do we know where the source of this is coming from? Any idea where the source that's contaminating the well?
So the source is unknown. We have done some studies. Some, our consultant has taken a look at the various areas, and it's not clear. There's no smoking gun, so to speak. There isn't an industrial use. It's not near a firefighting facility, which has been the source of, you know, or training facility has been the source of some of these, you know, types of contamination in the past. My professional opinion, and it's just that an opinion because we don't have any documented proof, is that it's coming from septic systems. You know, PFOS and these types of PFOS, which there are a total of six, and it's a combined total that DEP says if you exceed, that you do need to take wells offline, and we have done that. That can come from personal care products. It can come from clothing when you're doing laundry. It's a waterproofing type of chemical. And so it's not unreasonable to expect that it's everywhere, including in septic systems, especially in densely populated areas with a lot of septic systems. So as we've discussed before, part of our wastewater plan to take septic systems offline and put that into a central treatment is an appropriate way to deal with some of these potential contamination issues. But again, there was no documented location that you could point to and say, hey, it's this company or this industrial use that's clearly the issue with regard to where this is coming from.
The first thing I think I should find, try to find a source. PFAS come from landfills. And our landfill is not too far from Captain's Village. Yet there's been no test wells to see exactly if there is coming from our own landfill. I know that years ago, there were test wells on the pollution coming from the landfill, but it was heading up towards Waywalk Road, Station Ave area. But nothing has been done from down towards the Forest Road, Captain's Village area. So this is only a temporary fix. So we're gonna spend, looking at $5 million for something that's temporary, and it's not guaranteed to work. According to the EPA, there, as far as PFAS go, the polyfluoride substances, there are no treatment facilities that actually work on it. Unless they are considered PFOSs, which are other chemicals on the poly. I used to work for Hazardous Waste Company with BFI, so I'm familiar with this a little bit. I know our landfill has got some stuff in it that you don't want to even ask about many, many years ago, and it came in down here. I think there should be first study to see exactly where it's coming from. It's not totally coming, I don't think, from septic systems. And two, how much does it cost to put a new well in? We have a shortage of wells in this town. We got well shut down, yet no new wells have been put in. I talked to Mr. Wittenauer here, and his best guess is the last time a well was put in was in 1990s. It's a long time ago. And we got plenty of land, and of course, the article coming up down the road here, they're looking for more land to put wells on. $5 million is a lot. The other thing is, has the town secured any funding for this, through the state or federal government, yet? Bob?
There is an application to the state revolving loan fund program. And I might add that it's a 0% program with some pretty significant potential loan forgiveness that is associated with it for the treatment of contamination to water supply.
How long would that take for an application? Could it take a year or two? It does seem to be, you know, the government doesn't turn fast.
Their intended use plan for the funds is scheduled for publication in January of 2023.
23, yeah, that's. The other thing is, it says including all expenses incidentally related thereto. How much is it gonna cost? Well, first of all, I wanna ask, what type of filters this system has? Does anybody, can you answer that? Is it a carbon filter, an iron filter? Is it a carbon filter, an ion filter, or what?
This system has not been fully designed, so it has not been decided whether it's going to be an ion exchange or a granular activated carbon type of filter. The money that's being asked will cover both technologies, but that is something that this process and project is moving very quickly so that we can bring these wells online for the summer. And so it's a emergency procurement that's been, approval that's been granted from DCAM, and so we are moving very quickly on this, so it's kind of design as we go. So there are technologies, two very viable technologies, that have not been determined which one this will be.
Jeff?
Last one.
Go ahead, never mind, go ahead.
The, in relation to the expenses part, any estimate cost of when this filter is used, whether it's carbon, a carbon filter, it's going to contain hazardous waste. So what's the cost of getting rid of the filter or having the filter clean? That's the other part of the expenses that are going to be added in there. I don't think this is, you're looking at $5 million for the design to just set this up, but you're not looking at money to dispose of the filter itself or the contaminants that are in the filter, which could add up a lot of money, present day deal on this. I, I think I would recommend that this, this needs to, when we had done more study before it goes before town meeting.
Jeff, do you want to respond?
My response would be, many of our neighbors are dealing with the same issues, specifically the one I'm thinking of is Barnstable. The Hyannis district in which we sold water to has dealt with this PFOS issue, and they've had good success with the granular activated carbon system they have over there. There is some maintenance cost associated with that, but they had wells that they had to take completely offline, which is why they had to purchase water from Yarmouth. They now are providing their own water at, at a no detect level for PFOS because of the technology that they've selected. So we're looking at all the technologies as we move this forward, and there's, like I said before, there's some very effective technologies to deal with the problems that we're dealing with, very similar to our neighbors.
Can we stand there for a minute? Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments? Are you pretty confident that if this article passes and this work gets done, that these wells will be online prior to next summer?
That's the plan. There is a lot of steps between now and then, but we have a plan laid out that does accomplish that, as long as everything comes together.
Is that the goal?
That's absolutely the goal.
Because of the shortages we had this summer and the drought conditions, to try to alleviate that somewhat, anticipating that if that were to reoccur, would we get these wells operating prior to the influx of the summer population?
Absolutely. So that's the goal, and we have a reasonable schedule to do so. The unknown and the kind of the wild card is, as we're dealing with on all these projects, all construction projects, there's unknowns with regards to delivery, supply chain issues. So that's the, the unknown with regards to making things online for the summer, but that's certainly the goal, and we do believe it's very possible to make that happen. It just has to happen perfectly as far as timing goes.
Another question. How, how long has the state been monitoring PFOS levels for? How many, how many years does this monitoring go back? Is it, is it kind of a, more of a recent event with the state?
It is a recent turn of events where the level of PFOS was lowered to the 20 parts per trillion for a combination of six PFOS elements. That, that lower level was just recently enacted. Previously, it was a much higher level, and there is no federal standard for PFOS. And so this is a very developing type of contamination that we're looking to address here.
So even if the state became concerned with these levels at whatever point in time it was, and if you're correct that it's septic systems is, is the, is the source of it, this contamination could have been done many, many years prior to these levels being set, correct?
That's correct. We haven't been testing for these chemicals all that long. I also did notice that our water superintendent is on the participants list on the call and has her hand up. She might have some additional information or be able to answer questions if we could promote her to a panelist. That would be greatly appreciated, but the short answer to your question is yes. It's been a relatively short period of time that we've been testing for these types of chemicals.
Yeah, I mean, these things don't happen just all of a sudden. I mean, these levels of contamination generally, they're, they're done over many, many, many years, and then they get to a certain level where people start getting concerned. But that doesn't mean that's where the contamination's starting. It just means that's when the, it peaks to that point of concern.
That's correct. It's been there in the system for a long period of time. We're now getting, being asked to react to some very low levels in the system before we have to take things offline or treat. So that we're reacting to a change in regulations more than it is a increasing level of contamination, if you will.
Can we go to Lori? Can we get Lori on?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So just to add to what Jeff was just saying about the regulations, I just wanted to add. So the Massachusetts regulations started in April of 2021 for us, the size of our system, and there is no federal MCL or maximum contaminant level for PFOS chemicals. However, there are health advisories, which are much higher than the Massachusetts, there, which were much higher than the Massachusetts regulations, but now, more recently, they came out with very low health advisories for several certain PFOS chemicals. And they are expected to come out with, this is, the EPA is expected to come out with new actual regulations that will be turned into MCLs by the end of 2022. So that, that would apply to the entire country right now. We're just based on a Massachusetts MCL. So we may have different regulations that we have to deal with going forward, just as a, as a heads up there. And just going back to a couple of Mr. Sullivan's questions, the actual chemicals that we found in Wells four and five, which are off of Long Pond Drive, are PFOS and PFOA. And those are, those are what we're finding the high, the highest in four, five, and well 10. So I just wanted to answer a couple of those questions.
Does anybody have anything for Lori they'd like to ask? Vida, please.
So do I understand that there was ongoing maintenance or inspection for these chemicals by the employees of DPW?
Vida, please face front and speak to the microphone, because when you turn to Jeff, we lose you.
Okay. I, I was asking whether there was an ongoing inspection by the, the town employees of, of these wells, you know, on some kind of ongoing basis, to, to check for these chemicals? Or did we wait to have the, the state come in and, and, you know, check them?
Okay. So the concern is, or not the concern, but the question is, do we have some kind of regular inspection at the local level, or do we depend on state inspections?
We do all the required water quality testing. We take samples in-house. Lori could comment on the regularity of that, and it does depend on what you're testing for, how often you do that, but we take samples and we generally send them out to labs to be evaluated. For the PFOS, it's a very time-consuming test, and we don't get results back immediately. But Lori does have her hand up, so maybe she wants to comment on this.
Okay, Lori, can you help us out on this?
Yeah, we did start testing for, for PFOS chemicals in April of 2021, when it was required by Mass DEP. We previously did test for PFOS chemicals, part of the federal program called the Unregulated Contaminants Monitoring Program, UCMR, several years ago, but at that time, the testing limit was parts per billion. But now, the Massachusetts regulations are parts per trillion. So back when we did that previous testing, everything was fine because it was at a parts per billion level. And just to note, our first sampling that we did for all of our wells in April of 2021, all of them were below the Massachusetts regulations. It wasn't until six months into testing that we found four, five, and 10 to be over the limit. The limit is 20 for the six PFOS chemicals that Massachusetts regulates. Four and five were at 21, and 10 was at 23. So we're just above that lim, that limit. But they are all off right now, so that we're not putting that water out to our customers.
Vida?
So is the, this proposal, this proposed way of dealing with this, is that the preferred way, or are there any other ways of dealing with this situation? I have to tell you, when you see $5 million and the word "temporary" next to it practically is, it's very concerning. I mean, the, the, I don't understand, you know, maybe I misunderstand temporary. I mean, this is not going to be a permanent solution, is that it? Or is it just because it's mobile and what have you, that you call it that way? Sorry, I keep telling.
We'll go to Jeff from, we'll go to Jeff for an explanation, but my understanding is if you put a permanent structure there, I guess, to treat this, it's, it's not a quick, something that can be done quickly. It's, it's time-consuming and very costly, and that the urgency of the problem can't wait that long for the water to be treated. Is that correct?
That's a good summary. Also, a permanent solution would be likely in a fixed building, which takes longer to permit and get constructed, where a mobile solution is in, as the picture shows, more of a containerized system that can be more easily deployed to particular locations and, and set up and used much more quickly. The permanent solution is probably on the order of 15 or 16 million dollars, so although five is a lot of money, that is not the permanent solution, but it is, like the article suggests, mobile and reusable, so that we can move it to well number 10, where we're having exceedances currently, or used at other wells if they exceed the maximum allowable limits in the future.
Assume, Jeff, you were going to do a permanent solution immediately, and I'm not suggesting that you should, but how long do you think it would take you from start to finish to have that building erected and have that problem being treated?
It would take a couple of years, just looking at the experience of our neighbors that I mentioned before, Hyannis Water System. They purchased water from us for at least one, you know, good chunk of a three-year agreement. They knew about the problem, they had a system designed and, and a fixed facility constructed. So it'd take multiple years, two to three years, in that neighborhood.
So in addition to the, the big number that you've given us for the permanent solution, you would be offline for probably a couple of years more?
Correct.
All right. Vida?
I, I guess the word "temporary" probably should be expunged and, and just use "mobile" or something like that, "mobile unit," which wouldn't be, the, the temporary somehow implies that, you know, we're, we're going to have to go on to something else. But this, this can, this system, I guess, can be used for, I don't know how long, you know? Maybe, maybe we don't need the, the building and, and everything else. And, and then dispense with the word "temporary."
Yeah, if I understand this correctly, this could be used at this site for a number of years. Plus, alternatively, when there was a, a building built to treat these wells permanently, it could be moved to another location. So it's not something that is just specific to where these wells are located, correct?
That's correct. That's a, a great summary again. Another one of our neighboring or close-by towns that's dealing with this, or water districts, I should say, is Com. They have what looks very similar, a mobile type of solution, that they deploy on a seasonal basis because of the high demand for water throughout the Cape. And they winterize it and then redeploy it again the next year. That's exactly what could be done in this particular case as well.
Tom Sullivan?
I know I'm past my limit on questions on this article. If I heard correctly, we're not sure what's causing the contaminant to perhaps to be high here. And I thought I heard the water department person just say Long Pond Drive. Many years ago, a few years ago, there was a house fire down there, and I wondered if the fire department used foam, firefighting foam to put it out. It was about the intersection of Long Pond Drive, Forest Road, about the second or third house up on the left. I believe someone died there. It's a ranch house. It's been rebuilt. I wonder how far that is from those wells and if there was firefighting foam used there. Some of the foams, it goes back, I've been exposed to it myself at the base, but the firefighter foam is one of the main causes in other places. I'm not saying it's here, but we're not sure what the cause is. It's a lot of money to be start looking at temporary when you don't know the actual cause, a root of the problem. And if you understand the root of the problem, then you should be able to address it. See, I, I think we should do more testing down in that area to find out exactly what the root cause. If it's a septic system, fine. That means it's going to be long-term. But if it's something of an isolated incident, then it's a short-term deal. But we don't know what the cause of it is, and I think we need to look in and investigate further. In the meantime, put a new water well in someplace in town to make up the shortage of these wells. I think that should have been possibly addressed with the dry season, this weather, which I'll address in Article 18. But I think really, to look into it more before we start getting money, borrowing money, and everything else, you got to find out what the root cause of it first. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to respond to those comments. First of all, having been involved in overseeing and engaged in groundwater cleanups in other areas, I, I agree that there's some validity in trying to investigate to figure out where the source of the contamination is from. The fact is, though, that it could take, that could take many, many years, involving installation and drilling of monitoring wells and a lot of analysis. That could be a, an expensive undertaking in and of itself. The other thing is, is there was a time when it was relatively easy to actually identify, cite, and permit a new well, but today, that process is incredibly complicated and very, very time-consuming. So what we're trying to do here is actually address the problem. It's, it's, we have an immediate situation, and to not address it and engage in this other process clearly puts us on track for many, many years of studies and investigations. And for me, I just don't think we have the luxury of that kind of timeframe. And what we're doing is not unlike what other communities are doing. It's not like we're charting a path in a different direction to deal with this problem. I think the Water Department and the DPW have set up a very responsible approach to this, and I do believe, I regret to say, that this equipment, I, I'm almost certain of it, I think, will be used probably in dealing with other problems once it gets done with this particular well field. For people that may not be familiar with Wells four and five, it's right off of Long Pond Drive, as, as you well know, Tom. It's in an area that's densely populated. There could be multiple sources of contamination feeding into that area. And one of the things that we've learned over the years about groundwater contamination is that when you actually turn on the pumping station and draw water into the wells, it can draw water from a very wide area. So it's conceivable that when those well field, those wells are pumped and pumped at a relatively high rate, we could be drawing in contaminants from the landfill plume, or we could be drawing contaminants in from homes. And so you have to ask yourself, once you've identified that, then what can you do? Well, you're going to have to still do the same thing. You're going to have to remediate the contamination, and it still is probably best to remediate the contamination at the pumping station with the treatment system, because it may even be significantly more expensive going out and remediating PFAS at the places that you've identified, such as septic systems, a landfill plume, and so forth. So a lot of thought has gone into this. These are all excellent questions. These are the kinds of questions that homeowners and other residents that'll be at town meeting could certainly ask. They're very legitimate. I think they're, they're, and it's good to have this conversation tonight, but I just want to reassure folks that a lot of thought went into this. And if that was a faster or less expensive direction, we'd be, we would have And if that was a faster or less expensive direction, we would have spent a lot more time talking about that and plotting that out.
How much does it cost to put a well in?
Well, I'd refer to the Water Department or DPW. But installing wells and developing a game plan to monitor movement of plumes, groundwater contamination plumes, that can... That's not cheap.
Back in the 1970s, I attended a town meeting here. We cired a lot of land for water. A lot of that land today is untouched, virgin land. A lot of it's behind the Mackey's Middle School, goes all the way to Bayberry, all the way to the Mid-Cape Highway. That's a large area. What would it cost to put a well? We have a well at the end of Insel Hallett Road, up by the DPW. Now, that was taken offline for salt contamination many years ago from the distate. It's back online. To the right of that, looking north, are the well fields. So what would it cost to put a well there, hook it in, and bring it into our main line? That's all I'm just asking.
No, like I said, I think that's a... Mr. Chairman, I think that's a very legitimate question. The reality is, is that you literally... If we want to find the best new sources of water that don't require treatment, you just can't pick a spot. You have to do a series of investigations, checking out the soils, checking out other potential pollution. I don't want to be argumentative, but I would disagree. The town of Barnstable is an example of a community looking for new well fields, new water supplies. They have been at it for several years, and they still don't have a plan in place. So... And you would think in Barnstable, with all the open space that they have set aside and protected, that they'd be much further along by now, but they're not. It's not easy. It might sound easy. It might come across to the average voter as easy, but I can tell you, it's incredibly difficult, and it's laden with a very lengthy regulatory review process, you know? And so even, let's assume, just for the sake of discussion, that we decided to investigate the possibility of a well field in the area that you mentioned. That is going to... That's a very lengthy process that will take many, many years.
Jeff?
Yes, I think Selectman Forrest's explanation was great. I can't add too much to that, other than I'm intimately familiar with another community that's going through some well development currently. And we're looking at $3 to $5 million for a well. There's multiple structures that need to be set up potentially with a pump station, chemical feed buildings. This is a very complicated process, lengthy process. In fact, I'm familiar with the community that's going through this now, and it's easily in excess of five years, probably likely more closer to eight, to actually go through the process on a very expedited fashion. It's very difficult to get new wells permitted through the process. It used to be a lot easier many years ago, but with different changes in policies and practices and regulations at the state level, it becomes increasingly difficult. And I do... Last thing I want to say is the town of Yarmouth is looking at that as far as future well development. It's just not a short-term solution.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Let's move on to the next article, please.
This is Article 9, Lead Water Service Inventory. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow and transfer available funds pursuant to the Act of 1928, Chapter 146, Massachusetts General laws 41 and 69B, to sum of $455,000 or any other sum for the purpose of completing a lead water service inventory and replacement plan for all the existing water lines, including expenses and incidental costs. The explanation is, "The Water Division proposes to complete a lead service line inventory as required by the EPA. Revis lead and copper rule. The rule requires that all water systems determine and document the material for all service lines for the purpose of identifying lead lines by October 2024. The Yarmouth Water System includes over 16,400 service lines and has a minimal documentation as to the material of each service." And the graphic there shows pretty much the scope in a sense, and, correct me, Jeff or Lori, if I'm wrong, that from the property line into the street is the town's, but from the property line into the house is the homeowner's responsibility. And I think the lead line is for the service line going in to determine if the lines from the municipal side to the property line are lead. Some of this will be done as they do water projects like 6A also.
Hi, this is Lori. I can jump in real quick. The lead line, we have to evaluate the entire line from the main to the house, regardless of ownership. So that was what this project would entail, is determining material of every one of our service lines. I just wanted to note, we did apply for SRF funding for this project. And basically, the status of that, it's not part of the intended use plan in the spring. It's its own thing, and it would likely be total loan forgiveness in the end. But they won't give us an answer on whether or not we get it until we approve this at town meeting. So there's a good chance that we'll have it paid for completely through the SRF program, but they don't approve it until the town approves the request for funding through town meeting. So it should be a win-win for the town there, as long as this is approved.
Questions or comments? Yes.
Quick question. Lori, is there sufficient money to do the whole 16,000 checks?
So this... The request that we're asking for will utilize Kleinfelder, our consultant, to complete the evaluation of all the services. So it won't be necessarily that they're going to go to every single house. We are able to use modeling, actually, to... If we dig up a few services in an area, they're able to kind of give that area a blanket. It's this material based on digging up these holes if they all have similar construction years and things like that. So they're going to be looking at the age of the property, the age of the services, and kind of sort of develop a model to predict what the services are. In addition, there has to be a public education portion of it, where customers are asked to look at the service inside their house. And we'll get as much participation as we can from customers. And with that information fed into this model, that's how it'll determine the material for all 16,400 customers.
Great. Lori, thank you.
Lori, is there a rough date cutoff beyond which lead piping wasn't permitted?
Yeah, there was a lead pipe ban in 1986, and that included solder. I think pipe... Lead pipe was phased out before that, but the solder still had lead up until 1986.
So what was that date?
1986.
1986. So the search will probably be pre-1986?
Right. We can eliminate any service that was added after 1986, right off the bat.
But it could go back, almost, probably close to 100 years before that, right?
Yeah, the system started in 1933, so not quite 100.
Okay. All right, anybody else on the... Yeah?
Right. Lori, again, this is just for inventory. This is not for remediation.
Correct.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
All right, let's go to 10. Fire Department Strategic Planning.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from fire receipts reserved account to sum of $68,000 to fund consultant service for fire department strategic plan or take any action thereto. This is recommended by the Board, 5 to 0, by the Finance Committee, 4 to 0. Strategic planning is a process that defines organization's identity, mission, value, and more importantly, its vision and plan to arrive at newly defined future space strategic plans. Our homegrown processes that articulate direction for the next three to five years in the form of a living document that regularly reviewed and updated. The plan will focus on the coordination of activities, leadership development within a department, and help provide a roadmap for all future actions on the basis of related planning, personnel, budget, capital. Funding will be used to pay the consultant and personnel costs to complete the plan.
Any questions or comments on Article 10?
Just a snide remark. Sometimes I think that Yarmouth is in the place of funding consultants, the consultant profession here, because every time you turn around, somebody else in this town has and is engaging consultant services.
Anyone else?
Article 11. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds, the fire receipts reserved in appropriation account, the sum of $76,320 to purchase and equip the following goods and services. Replace forestry 49 brush truck, extractor and gear dryers, for a total of $76,320. Fire department vehicles and life safety equipment are funded by ambulance revenue. In addition, above is required a grant match for forestry 49, $510,041, and extractors and gear dryers, $54,545. Will come from two recently awarded grants for a combined total of $56,586. So as you can see, the fire department has done a great job. The amount of grant money fired exceeds the amount of the request.
All right, so this article is for $76,320 appropriation, right?
Correct.
Replace the forestry 49 brush truck at the cost of $70,000. Extractors and gear dryers at $6,320, for a total of $76,320.
And the grant is $510,041 to be matched by the $70,000. And then the other grant is $54,545 to be matched by the $6,320.
Okay, any questions or comments on Article 11? Let's go to Article 12, Wastewater Financing.
Article 12, Wastewater Financing. Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0. Finance Committee 4-0. To see if the town will vote to transfer $1,514,943 from free cash short-term rental revenue, transfer $300,000 from free cash septic host fee, and transfer $6,407.70 from septic betterment payments in appropriate to sum of $1,821,350.70 to the wastewater enterprise fund. Said fund to be used to design, engineer, and construction debt service related to municipal wastewater projects. Last year, the town indicated initiated funding for the wastewater enterprise, funding using several sources from free cash, from the short-term rental tax, septic host fees. Similar sources will be used in future to provide funding for this account. These funds can be used for funding the costs associated with the construction and future municipal wastewater and possible debt service. As wastewater projects are developed, this article is meant to provide the initial funding to help defray capital investments.
Okay, so from free cash from short-term rentals, and $300,000 from free cash septic host fee, and $6,407 from septic betterment, the total sum of roughly $1.8 million is going to be dedicated to the wastewater enterprise fund?
Correct. And that fund was set up at a prior town meeting, and the same type of transfers were used to establish that fund.
Anybody have any questions on that? Yes, Chris Greeley.
Sir, I just wanted a little clarification. So at this point, there's nothing you're expending this money on. This is just simply to get the funds into this account so that it's available at a future date for use? Is that what it is?
That is correct. And we have prefunding goals of approximately $10 million that were about in year two to three. So this is contributing to that.
Okay. That would be a helpful statement to make, I think, at a town meeting. So understand it isn't that you're going to expend it right away, but that it's the continuation of that yearly process that's going on multi-year. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Yes, Vida?
Another just remark, I think, when the list here, the sources of this fund is free cash and short-term rental tax. I think they forgot to put in the CPA chunk that has been broken out of the... And it's causing a lot of questions with our real estate taxes under CPA, because nothing is adding up anymore as a result of that chunk that's being taken out from CPA.
Right, that wasn't a question I...
Okay. Article 13.
Article 13, Term of Sewer Betterment. To see if the town will vote to accept and adopt a provision inside of Mass. General Law, Chapter 83, Section 15D, which authorizes sewer betterment assessments for a period not to exceed 30 years or to take any action relative thereto. This article accepts a provision of state law which allows a town to extend the wastewater betterment loan payback period from 20 years to 30 years in order to allow homeowners and businesses a longer payback period for wastewater betterments associated with the development of municipal wastewater system. In order of land, the SASS may pay the total remaining principal due without prepayment penalty. So this basically takes the term of 20 years and extends it by enabling this enabling legislation that was recommended by the Board of Selectmen, 401, and the Finance Committee, 40. Not sure if that's a typo in the 401. It is the term of sewer betterments.
Okay, so we need voter action to be able to extend a payback period for any betterments related to wastewater systems. Extend that 10 years from 20 to 30. That's all. There's no specific plan associated with this. It's just gives the town more flexibility in terms of betterments in the future. Anybody have a question, comments?
Mr. Chairman, the vote on the slide is a typo. It says 401. It's actually in the warrant 5-0 by the Board of Selectmen. We'll correct that before town meeting.
Okay, let's go on then to 14, PEG Expenses.
To see if the town will transfer from free cash to sum of $345,000 for the public educational and government PEG cable television access and related costs for the current fiscal year to take any action thereto. Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0. Finance Committee 4-0. The article funds the cost of public education and government cable television access services for the current year, including operation programming for cable access channels 18 and 22. The source of the funds is the cable access PEG access fees paid by Comcast to the town, closed out to the general fund in free cash effective July 1, 2022. Due to inaction at the April 2021 town meeting, the PEG access fees will be deposited in a dedicated account, which will be used to pay for the cost of PEG operations starting in the fiscal year 2024.
Questions or comments on Article 14? Yes, Vida?
Could someone explain a little more clearly? I get the... I thought the impression that I was left with was we had to pay public educational cable television access, the $345,000. And then in the explanation, it seems like things are moving every which way, and something else happens. Can somebody please explain this more clearly?
Certainly. I can clarify that the confusion comes in, the source of the funding for the public educational and government cable access comes from the cable television license. And... license, and we're required to use those fees for that PEG access. And up until the current fiscal year, those funds went into the general fund and then were closed into free cash, and we required, there's an article like this every year, to take those funds from free cash and use them to support the public education and government cable television. So what we did in 2021 that was in conjunction with in 2022, we have a new cable television license that rather than have these sums collected, fold into free cash, and then we take them out the next year, we're going to have a dedicated fund that is organized under the DOR guidelines and tracks the money that we get specifically from the cable television license for the PEG access, and we'll have future articles that instead of using any free cash or outside money, we'll be able to show this is exactly how much we collected for PEG, this is exactly how much that we're spending on it, this is where the money is going. So the system, this will be the last time that free cash is used to support the, the PEG, but the whole system is one of the things we've revamped to make it simpler and more efficient based on the new cable license that we have in, in the accounting.
So it's just a rerouting of the money that cable pays us?
That's correct.
Into a dedicated fund?
Into a dedicated fund which we'll be able to use to leverage, you know, more public outreach, transparency, communication with the community. So I just want to mention that piece. That's going to be a, moving forward, a major initiative, and I think that's commensurate with the goals that have been voted by the Board of Selectmen to really take a look at leveraging this public educational and government cable access to up the entire community outreach and, and communication.
All right, thank you. Article 15, Maticke's Middle School Utilization Study.
Sure, Maticke's Middle School Utilization Study, to see if the town will vote to transfer $225,000 from free cash to Maticke's Middle School Utilization Study. The study show in an equitable, transparent manner, analyze, assess, plan, and recommend three to five alternatives for the use, reuse, and redevelopment of property, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a Maticke's Utilization Committee to oversee the study with the properties understudied to include the Maticke's Middle School and the adjacent ME Small Elementary School. It is anticipated that the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District will vacate the current Maticke's Middle School at 400 Higgins Crowell Road in January 2023. This analysis is necessary to create an effective reuse plan in a manner that considers multiple alternatives in an effective reuse of the site. The Selectmen will appoint a study committee and will work within the context of the outlined scope of work. That scope of work is on file in the town clerk's office. The board has a brochure that is the same text as what's in the scope of work at their desk. This is something in draft form right now that we'll be handing out at town meeting. And what we'll be looking at is some of the follow areas, economic, cultural, recreational, tourism, social housing, community centers, basically looking at multiple options for reuse of facility and engaging focus groups to make sure that we do not leave any stone unturned in some of the options. The study involves a series of steps, setting the committee structure, hiring consultants, doing a building and grounds assessment. Already, we have substantial assessments from the school department, been working with David Flynn of the school department to gather all those so we don't have to re-engineer all of that, but we want to pick up from there because the assessment that the schools did was within the context of a continued reuse as a school. We may need to broaden some of that. The community's facilities assessment, what this does is look at this facility within the context of other community facilities. So if we have facilities which maybe have a lot of work to do and would be better relocated here, or we look at the total context of all our facilities, this is a brief look at many of the municipal facilities to understand the context of this project within a context of other potential projects. Focus group or subgroups, RFP, this type of process would be gathering groups which may have interest in the building and basically soliciting input as to how they would use the building and getting specifics, apples-to-apples comparison across these groups. So we would probably put out a request for proposals from the groups and have them give us specific information. In addition to that, we would do a community survey. The survey may be based on sort of some of those focus group ideas to bounce it off the community. Typically in these projects, you do benchmarking, so you take a look at how other communities have done this. You don't want to do it too early because it lends it to direction, the study, but you want to do it after you get some of the information like the focus group, subgroups, and community survey to determine the relationship of other projects. Scenario concepts brainstorming, and throughout this, we're holding public meetings and the committee is managing the process with probably myself and, and other staff. So as this is more targeted towards sort of the consultancy work, it is also work of the committee and the public. So brainstorming is, given this information you have from the scenarios, given the information you have from committee survey, and given the benchmarking information, what other people have done, what do you think are the potentials for the project? And then from there, you take scenario development and programming and plans, and you take the brainstorming and start it putting into concrete sort of layout in the building. Where would some of these uses go? And as it said in the beginning, three to five alternatives. Typically, you would do three alternatives, and some of them might have an A and a B, so you really come up to five to some extent. Fiscal impact, cost benefit. One of the keys to these types of studies is you may want something in a particular building, but you need to understand what its long-term costs are and its immediate costs in a renovation. So you don't want to put something in there that it could have gone someplace else with less cost over time. So cost benefit is basically taking a look at what are your upfront costs and what are your operational costs if you decide scenario A, B, or C? So the scenario assessment rating is actually the committee in working with other boards and committees to determine which one comes to the top, which one has the best approach in not only the cost estimates and, but uses for the community. A draft report would go to town meeting, so rather than bringing a final and say, here it is, you bring a draft, and then the final report would happen after that, after we get comments. Any questions on the scope? The scope, as I said, is available at the town clerk's office. There is a brochure that's developed that's in front of the board that has these same components. We've broken out the cost estimates. Some of this is based on prior experience and other projects. So what we're looking at is breaking it down with the estimated hours, equivalent days, the rate, and then the cost, and then production costs. So some of the deliverables will have a production cost, like the production of plans, presentations, maps, and things like that. Those, so those are the deliverable costs, and then there's a 10% contingency. A lot of your costs are going to be in the scenario development where you're actually having production of plans. And one thing to remember here is that this is a series of consultants. It's most likely going to be an architectural firm with a planning firm, and then the fiscal impact group is typically separate. You usually don't find all three of them in one firm, or we could end up hiring an architecture firm and a planning firm, and then the consulting on the fiscal impact additionally. So these are the sort of steps that seem to cover everything, and what it does is it gives us opportunities to engage groups in the community, to see how the Maticke's could be part of their goals and objectives, and also, you know, as staff, we would also look at other alternatives that are related to economic development and things like that if focus groups don't come to fruition in certain categories. One of the key aspects which was mentioned this evening is we want to make sure we involve the water department, conservation department, and others as it relates to the adjacent water supply. So we want to make sure that whatever the proposal is, there is due respect for the adjacent wells and other things that are near Maticke's.
Thank you, Bill. Eda?
Just a little note, on Monday, the superintendent, at the school committee meeting, the superintendent announced that the move-out date is going to be at least the end of February because of all sorts of delays and stuff like that. So that's, that's that. I have a question. The $225,000 mentioned here, that's strictly for use by the utilization committee, it's not consultants or anything like that, right?
The utilization committee will be engaging consultants to do the study. So, I mean, we need architects and other professional technical people to do the...
But this, this $225,000, it will cover that also?
Yeah, the study committee will not actually have money for construction. This is purely an analysis to determine the utilization and eventual redevelopment and the...
I understand that, but I thought a lot of the work would be done by the committee, and I thought that money was just for their use rather than, but you're saying that there will be consultants hired to, and covered by this $225,000.
Correct, and, and the, the committee obviously is going to do work in ratings and meetings. I mean, much like the capital budget committee, they do a lot of great work in reviewing proposals and doing ratings, but they don't actually get the funds associated with the capital, similar to this.
It's going to be, I think, similar to the drive-in utilization committee where they worked with consultants as they went along.
Correct.
And they can't do it by themselves without this professional support, and that's what it, that's what the money's for, that professional support.
And, and most of the analysis that's been done has been related to schools, so we need to make sure that we do an analysis that is broad enough to look at other uses. There's a schedule in the last slide, we still need to tweak it. I think you're correct that they're moving out in February. We've heard that they're probably going to hold the building until June because they still want to be able to move items out over that time, so we wouldn't really potentially take possession until June, but the schedule is as quick as we can make it within the context of engaging the public and engaging focus groups, so we don't have a vacant building for too long.
Okay, good explanation. Dan?
Bill, I've, I've always thought that 220, 2, is it 225 or 250?
225.
I've always thought that's a little low. Is there an inflation factor that you've added into the, because I mean, this is a three-year cycle that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, the, originally, I think we had $150,000, and the board mentioned we should take a closer look at it. The numbers you see there close in terms of your architectural fees at 175 an hour. It's sort of a blended rate. It's not the top person, but it's a mix of people planning at $120 an hour. So we're, we are using them strategically, and what happens is as we see, you know, that the current studies are sufficiently adequate, we would pull money out of that and then go into other areas. Our goal really is to get some specificity. So it might be that some of the benchmarking and other things might be done by staff if we start seeing we need more in the technical area about a consultant. So, I mean, to the question, yes, we will be involved, staff and also the committee that I've seen committees do benchmarking and contact other towns that we may not need consultant there. We've got a line item for them to get involved to sort of make the comparison, but we think we should have enough to get where we need in terms of the three alternatives. This isn't going to get you 25 or even 10% plans, it's going to get you layout plans. The difficulty will be is what is a plan set today and how much money do we have to spend on that?
Thank you.
Okay, Article 16, Recreation Capital Assessment and Improvement Plan.
Recreation Capital Assessment Improvement Plan, to see if the town will vote to transfer $120,000 from free cash to fund Recreation Capital Assessment and Improvement Plan. The plan will create a detailed series of improvements time with financing options to improve and expand recreational facilities commensurate with analysis of need, condition, capacity, financing solutions that include parks, playgrounds, fields, and recreational structures. Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0. So the condition of recreational assets and capacity, those assets are crucial to ensure safety and full use of the facilities. It create a three-tiered plan, first assess the condition and the capacity, and what we mean by capacity is if you have playing fields, are they being overused? Are they enough for the leagues that we have? Do we need more? So when you talk about capacity, even down to, you know, parking lots, do we have enough? First, the process will assess it. Then the plan will establish the most optimum approach to address those needs through a detailed capital plan with cost estimate. So here, we're looking at, and it won't be detailed to this extent that you're going to be getting bids off of it. It'll be detailed that you would have a spreadsheet outlining across all your assets. What is the items that need to be improved? What are the capacity issues that we need to increase? And then creating a financing approach. Now, some of this comes from Capital Budget Committee who's always wanted to create a structure where they understand all the needs going on in the future and try to create a level funding for projects so you don't have spikes or emergencies in capital, and that's what this really goes to. And the second thing it goes to is recreational grants usually come in in the spring, sometimes in the summer. There's a park program. If we had this type of sort of laying out all those needs, we could then basically say we're going to apply in this year for this program, the next year for that program. So the important opportunity here is that the program will be run through Recreation, Recreation Commission, and they'll reach out directly to the leagues, directly to the playground people. We're thinking of setting up committees at each of these areas so that they can give us feedback on what the issues are. And this is similar to what we were looking at in golf and, and a sort of a five-year plan. Here, we have this same approach. And again, the important thing is addressing some of those issues and capacity issues. There was a discussion on how we used to have soccer tournaments here. How does, what we have for capacity involve in bringing those soccer tournaments back and creating those opportunities? So the, really the issue is, this one is clear, you know, what is the condition of the asset beyond, beyond the physical nature? Any obsolescence issues? The asset could be in relatively good shape, but by virtue of codes and standards, there may be obsolescence. Capacity is a function of over or under use of the facility. I've done one of these studies in Amesbury, and we basically figured out we don't have enough fields for soccer, or we don't have enough fields for baseball, and we started looking at multipurpose fields to allow soccer and lacrosse to coexist just by restriping. So those are some of the planning options you have. I mean, we have lighted fields predominantly because they can't find a lot of field space during the day, so we have a lot of people competing even for the lighted fields. Significance, is the asset still significant? And you see in the Sandy Pond project, that is a very significant park in ADA. That's something that maybe 20 years ago wouldn't be something you look at, but we want to look at what's significant today and what could be significant in the future. And financing and taking a look at all the funding sources and do we have grants, are there CPA opportunities, are there other opportunities that we can sequence in so we don't have those blips in requests based on, you know, projects coming up because they may have been deferred or they are reached obsolescence. Last item is the connection to users. You're basically taking the programming side, which is recreation and the programs that they run on these fields, and connecting it to the capital side. By virtue of going through the Recreation Commission, Recreation Department, Parks Department, you're bringing together all those sources to create the plan. you're bringing together all those sources to create the plan. So the important thing is, is it's sort of a trend that we like to see at the Capital Budget Committee, so when they see five years out, they see it related to an actual cost laid out in a plan, and it's not something that we're thinking about, it's something that's part of the sequence. You can do a lot better prioritization on things like this when you have these kind of documents.
Any questions or comments on Article 16? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Article 17, Golf Division Capital.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer Golf retain earnings account to sum of $560,000 to fund the following capital investment. New shingles, doors, and windows to complete the Bayberry Hills clubhouse exterior. Direct line transfer pipe from wastewater treatment plant to, I think that's a septic treatment plant, to the irrigation pond at Bayberry Hills Golf Course. In Link's Course Master Plan and Engineering. Each of those are $150,000, $300,000, $110,000, for a total of $560,000. Board of Selectmen recommended five zero. Finance Committee, four zero. The Golf Division capital expenses are related to completion and necessary work to complete the clubhouse. New shingles, trim, doors will be installed. This will complete the clubhouse project for many years to come. The direct transfer pipe will allow for more efficient wastewater to be moved from the plant to the irrigation pond and allow the golf course to use the wastewater through the entire course, relying less on wells that support the course. Lastly, the Link's Course Master Plan will fund the design engineering specifications for our future improvements to the Link's Course. The total for the improvements is $560,000. They'll be using the Golf Enterprise Account to retain earnings account, has currently I have three graphics up here. This is, that's Bayberry. One of the issues we're looking at in the Bayberry clubhouse is some of the rising costs, so this additional funding will allow us to complete the work. We haven't started the work in anticipation of getting a more comprehensive approach. We have windows, roof, siding to be done, and this is really in another, in the capital improvements plan, we're looking at more of a capital improvements plan, but this is something that has to go out the door sooner because of the condition of the building. Eventually, you'll be seeing more of a system like what I spoke of in Recreation where we're creating a plan that has regular investments tied to the funding source. Next one is the transfer pipe. And as you can see there, the transfer pipe is from the septic facility, and this is just sort of, you know, conceptual run to the pond for the draw. So, the water will be deposited in the pond and then drawn from there to move through the irrigation system. The advantage here is we're not drawing from town water or the wells, and we're reusing the processed water out of the septic treatment facility. This is something that's been discussed in other areas, and because of the proximity to golf course, we have that opportunity. And some of the issues we face in the Link's Course, which is a course on top of a landfill, because you have that kind of condition, soils and other things are something that we need to take a look at. We have drainage issues, the condition of the traps and other things. So, this is to make improvements, make the course more playable. There are times during the year that flooding prevents carts and other access across the course because of the muddy conditions. As you can see there, it's more extensive. Back in there, you have areas that get quite wet, so we're looking at drainage improvements and also trap improvements, and this will give us a good idea on what the costs associated with those are. So, back to the table, the combined. As you can see, there are three items in this request, $150,000, $300,000, and $110,000. One is to make needed repairs of Bayberry Hills clubhouse. The other one is to give us some opportunity to use some of the water, processed water coming out of the septic treatment plant, and then to move forward on something that's been deferred as a Link's Plan. Any questions on that?
Anybody on Golf Division Capital? Okay, we'll go to 18, which is revision to the Yarmouth Code, or a Yarmouth Supply Conservation and Emergencies by Law.
The majority of this article is actually in the warrant book. Save everybody the reading of the actual ordinance, but to see if the town will vote to amend the Yarmouth General Bylaws, Chapter 142, by adding relative to water supply emergencies. And the purpose of this bylaw is to protect, preserve, and maintain the public health and safety, welfare, the environment, and the town of Yarmouth, ensuring adequate supply of drinking water and fire protection, protecting quality and quantity of water in local aquatic habitats such as ponds, rivers, and wetlands. This will be accomplished by providing for the imposition and any duly implemented best management practice or non-essential outdoor water use restrictions imposed by the town in accordance with its bylaw, the Yarmouth Water Conservation Policy, and/or by the Department of Environmental Protection under its state laws. And, rather than, I don't have the ordinance up on the screen.
This bylaw is relatively lengthy, and in the warrant, it goes, it starts on page nine, I believe.
Change to 10.
Page nine.
Yeah, nine, and goes through page 13, so there's quite a bit to it. Does anybody want to be heard on that? Tom Sullivan.
Good to stand up here. I've done extensive reading on this, even looking at the law itself, which is kind of complicated, the general laws, the statutes. Couple of questions came up, and I've had people ask me, defined what a public water supply is? What is our public water and what does it entail? Anybody can answer that? Because it doesn't say anything in the statute what a public water supply is or entails. It's entail just the pipes that come from the pumping stations, or does it include the aquifer? Is that part of the public water supply, the aquifer? Because I'm heading in a direction on this.
In general, the public water supply does include the aquifer. That's something that is a legal interpretation, and so I'll just be careful in commenting too much on that, but that is my understanding that it includes the aquifer particularly as it relates to Yarmouth, because that does affect how we access the groundwater. If the aquifer drops, it's more difficult and puts a strain within the Yarmouth public water supply, and so it's my understanding that, yes, it generally includes the aquifer.
Is that general?
I guess part of logically working through that question is to say, where does the public water come from? What is the source?
It's just the infrastructure of the town, or is the aquifer? Because in this here, a public water supply, you're looking at private, what about private wells? People that put wells in on their private property. Would that be considered under this? Because it's going into the aquifer. They gotta drill and get the water on their own land, and it's not tied in with the-
The question is, how is that water supplied?
Yeah.
It's not a private supply, it's a private well.
Yeah, so people who want to put private wells in will be subject to this, correct?
I mean, I'm not an expert in this area, but I would assume a well is a way of extracting-
Water.
Water. And that the well is a device, and the aquifer is the supply of the water.
Yeah, just to go back a little bit, this summer, we did go into it a little drought, dry conditions. I, as I said, I do water collection from the Coquera system, which is under the University of Colorado, which in turn sends their information to the state of Massachusetts and the National Weather Bureau. Goes around in a circle. I have a certified container plus a weather station on my roof. At the end of June, the aquifer was above normal. We had a wet June. In July, we did have a dry, dry, July and August. It was dry, it's been probably a long time since we've seen something like this. But come September, we're back up again. We had over three inches, which is, a little over three inches, which is slightly above normal rainfall for the month of September, and for the month of October, we had a whopping 7.50 inches of rain. So the aquifer is not in a dire need or desperate situation. And when I mention the aquifer, I'm talking to Sagamore Lens, which goes from the Sandwich Kipka Canal to the Bass River, all right? And some debate whether or not that even goes under the river into the Sagamore Lens, all right? Because some of the, it is a very deep source of water. So when it rains in the upper part of the Cape, and we don't get it, if you know, if you notice during the summer, this summer particularly, thunderstorms off Cape, Western Mass, where they all get the thunderstorms, but when they get closer to the Cape, they rain out. That's what we call a rain out, because the source of heat that pumps the thunderstorms is cut off from the ocean water. So it's basically rain out, the lower part of the Cape got the least amount, but the upper part of the Cape got the most amount. So when that water falls on the upper part of the Cape, it's affecting the town of Yarmouth, because we're all tied in with the same Sagamore Lens. So these are things that, I don't know who wrote this statute, where it came from, the DEP, it sounds like it came from the cities. The city of Boston gets there from the Carbon Reservoir. Did it drop? It did a little bit, but they didn't have any water restriction on it. Some cities like Worcester who have their own water sources out there, they did drop, they had to put in restrictions because they depend on that water, but not the aquifer. The aquifer never got below, a below normal level, and just to let you know, they measured the aquifer in West Barnstable. Maybe they should do it here in Yarmouth, but in West Barnstable, I figure that's about the halfway point between Bass River and the canal. Maybe it's the deepest point or something, but that's where they measure it, and I did my research on that. The other part of this declaration is, it says here, I have a note here, automated sprinkler systems. What is an automated sprinkler system? I don't know of one. They're all manual. The key words in this is automated. Maybe they have them in cities or something, but I don't see them here. My neighbors got them, they're manual, they have to start them. Now, they can be programmed to come on at certain times, but they're still a manual system. And a more efficient system of watering a lawn than standing out there with a garden hose for an hour or two with a nozzle watering your lawn, you'll use more water. Sprinkler heads are adjustable. The spray on the, can be adjusted. Should be a finer spray to a stream. It's not like you see up at the golf course. That is a different type of sprinkler head where that has to shoot out a long distance to water. All you saw at the football fields, so I guess there was a lot of complaints that the football field was being watered during this dry period this summer. Am I correct in that? There's some of the complaints?
It was an observation that people made.
Huh?
It was an observation that people made.
Observation, they saw that being done. Homeowners don't have those same type of, excuse me, sprinkle systems. I don't know if anybody on the board has one, all right? They're fine, they're installed by professionals. They also have rain gauges. Most of the new ones today, you have a rain meter up in your house. If it's going to rain, your system's shut down. Common sense tells you, if you know it's going to rain, you're going to shut it off So that's a question I have, it's not very well defined in this bylaw. The other part, and I'm not going to get too long here tonight, is in the section 142-11. Irrigation Systems Connected to Water Supply Registration. That has irritated more people. The town doesn't need to know who has an irrigation system. I think that's a, probably an invasion of personal property rights. They have a right to put irrigation on their system. A well-maintained lawn adds anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 in property values. I have neighbors in my neighborhood, they have sprinkler systems. I have neighbors that don't have them, and I just happen to look at the property assessments day and night. The ones that have them are higher, and the ones that don't are lower, because the property look doesn't look very good. The old Cape Cod look, let it go natural. That is probably the biggest obstacle in this whole thing, and the fines. And the other thing is what a DPW director said at the Selectmen's meeting here, and I called in about it, I was very irritated about that. Where the water meter system is used for billing, and that water meter system could possibly be used to check on people that might be violating if this bylaw passes, I question it, in my opinion. That'd be a Fourth Amendment right, unreasonable search, because you're going to use that evidence to give them a ticket or a fine, which could end up in court as evidence against them? That, to me, is an unreasonable search. The meter system was designed to read meter only for billing, to save the money time for people going out, knocking on the doors, and chasing homeowners to read their meters. At one time, then a lot of the meters in this town were outside the house. But I really think that that's the one thing that has irritated the most, and I think that might be where the biggest opposition to this whole thing is. Everybody's concerned about water. I'm very much concerned about it, but I do my fair share of looking at it, and my fair share of watering. I do water by hand, okay? I tried drainage pipes, but it doesn't really work with those rain barrels. You still get, you have to use electricity and everything else to pump it out, and it doesn't last very long. So I tried that one time, but I have no problem, the state has a state law, it's already in existence. Why do we need a bylaw to do it? All right, so I will oppose this at town meeting. I plan on doing an amendment to this article at town meeting, I'll let you know. I will submit it to town clerk in writing, and a couple of other articles that I've been looking at. This thing should be amended, and if not amended, should be defeated. This is an intrusion on the personal property rights of property owners here in the town of Yarmouth, the way this is written, all right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Vera.
I'm curious, did Jeff ever provide you with a basis for this very extensive bylaw with all the, you know, fines and, and just seeing the word police powers kind of got me off. I mean, I, we need to, I think, I personally would say this article needs to be withdrawn, and we should be given information on which it was based. We want to know exactly what happened after the restrictions were put in. How did that work? Or didn't work, or what have you? There has to be a reason, I mean, to have such an extensive and very intrusive and article, and I mean, a bylaw. It just, that doesn't seem to be quite, without having the information. I would like to see, I think we already had probably the strictest edicts on the use of water, you know, and so it would be interesting to see exactly what happened before we launch into something like this.
Chris, Chris Greeley.
I actually had been a little intrigued by various elements- I actually had been a little intrigued by various elements of this, but one of the areas that really bothered me was the section 142-11, which has to do with the registration. I mean, it just seems like it's a whole other system that you're putting into place for the town to have to monitor and all. But I'm also very concerned about how wide-open the wording within it is, so that a fee may be charged for its registrations, and the registration fees shall be set. And so, to a great degree, there's an awful lot of looseness within that as a property owner and as someone who's already paying the water bills and things within, you know, for my house. And this really concerned me to see, all of a sudden, that we're now looking at registration. And I'd actually be very happy if, because I've already had a conversation tonight earlier with one of your employees, if the kinds of registration and monitoring taking place on rentals and everything else was really getting done effectively. I mean, this just seems to me as another component to some things that I'm not real happy with that section of that. I didn't, I didn't have as many concerns as some of the other people who've talked, but that particular section really bothered me about registration and the "may" and the, you know, "will" and that kind of thing. Particularly since there's no real articulation about exactly what it will be and what it represents, what the cost represents, why, why registration is necessary. Thank you.
You could probably tell who has the sprinkler system just by driving by. The ones with the green lawns have sprinkler systems and the other ones don't.
They tend to push out, excuse me, and I'm sorry, I think in a lot of ways, they tend to push out less water than the people I see using the garden hoses with those big sprinklers at the end that are flowing all over the place with big columns of water going. I think it's far more controlled. They're on timers. They really have a very controlled system within the yard. And to tell you the truth, I think they actually are a little more effective than my running around trying to figure out where not water my driveway and, you know, not water the street with the hose. Thank you.
Jeff. We'll go to Jeff, then to Tom.
Yes, Jeff Goldby, Public Works Director, again. Just real briefly, the reason for the registration and probably one of the most important components is because a properly-operating system should have a properly-operating backflow device associated with it. And to make sure that happens, an inspection of that on a yearly basis should happen. We do backflow device inspections throughout the town, so we have staff within the Water Division that does that, so we're skilled in doing so. But to have a proper system, it should have a backflow device, not just to protect the water system generally, but also to protect the homeowner, to make sure there aren't chemicals or other things that are feeding back through the system. You know, if we have somebody that has a very lush lawn that's using an irrigation system, they're probably putting a good amount of fertilizer and chemicals on it. And so to make sure that that system's operating properly, a backflow device is critical. So that's one of the key reasons for registration.
I have another question or comment, Jeff. Generally, when you have a new requirement, it applies prospectively going forward, and it doesn't really affect people who are grandfathered, so to speak. I think that's something, if that's the rationale, Bob, I don't know if we can get any input from council on that, you know, whether that would be appropriate. I can see it if you're going to say for new installations, you've got to have a backflow device. I clearly understand that. But I, I don't know that you could say to people who already have a system that you have to install a backflow device when you didn't have to have one when they initially put it in. That's the question I have.
Do you have to have a backflow device?
Well, this is not, we don't have a registration system for irrigation currently, so we don't know really who does or doesn't. But I think that would be helpful information. It doesn't say here that you could be retroactively required to put a backflow device on. In fact, it doesn't even address backflow in here. I'm just suggesting that the reason it would be good to know who has irrigation systems out there is if the water commissioners, which are this board, decide there's something that you want to do with regards to backflow device in the future, you would have a basis to start with. You'd know what irrigation systems are out there. Currently, we don't. No.
This is Laurie, if I can jump in real quick. The backflow requirement is not a town policy. That's a state policy, and they are, have been required for many years on irrigation systems. It's just that we aren't currently checking to make sure it's been done properly or that they've been installed. So it wouldn't be a new requirement for irrigation systems. It's just a requirement in this bylaw that we know about it so we can check it, make sure they're operating properly.
When were they required? And who imposed that requirement? Was that a local requirement or a state requirement?
I don't know when irrigation systems were specifically included, but the backflow and requirements are Massachusetts DEP requirement.
So it's a state requirement?
Yes.
But we don't know when, we don't know when that became a state requirement.
Right. Backflows have been, you know, regulated for many years. I'm not, I just don't know if irrigation systems were always part of that or were added later. I can find that out.
I get an answer to that. The ones with green lawns, not necessarily with sprinkler systems, they could be out there with hoses watering their lawns, wasting water. So it doesn't necessarily. I also observed something during when we had the restriction too, which really I didn't like seeing. Driving down Route 28, going by the water park, we were on a restriction between 9:00 AM and 5:00 AM of watering. Yet I see a, I see the water park hooked up to a fire hydrant drawing water. Why? Why were they allowed to do that if we were residents, we're in a restriction? That's a commercial business, drawing a lot of water. And they had a red attachment to the fire hydrant. I watched it. I had a picture of it. I don't know if I still have it, but I did take a picture of it. Okay? So why was that attached? Okay? And will they be fined? Because they're going to have to, they have to circulate their water because of bacteria. Same with the miniature golf places. That has, they probably got pumps. I've seen, I know they hook up to the fire hydrants when they first start their seasons. And if, if water gets down, they might have to do, put more in. They might not have to be able to use that water if we enter a summer like they had July and August here. But that I did see. And that, that was something that never should have been, I think, should have been done. Where does the equipment come? Does that come from the Water Department to hook into the hydrant? Or does that come from the Fire Department? Not the Fire Department.
The Water Department.
You said Fire Department?
Water.
Water Department?
Yes.
Okay, it's a meter.
It's a meter.
So I guess the question is, did the Water Department authorize the water park to hook up to the hydrant during a drought? The answer is, the answer is yes?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chris.
I'm sorry. I don't want to carry this on too long, but Jeff brought up a point when he mentioned the word annual inspection. What are we talking about in terms of employees, employee-staff time? I mean, how are you looking at funding the kind of work about the registration inspections and everything else that are going on? Or is that what's going to happen, is people are going to be charged an annual fee now on their water bills to have these inspections done? I mean, this is, this is just kind of interesting to me, that do they have existing employees? Are we looking at additional staffing in order to implement this particular section? Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to respond to that? I guess the question is, where's the manpower going to come from? At what cost? And is the cost going to be passed on to the homeowner? In, in, in the form of a fee?
Those are things that still need to be determined. Because we don't know the number of irrigation systems out there, there's really no practical way to calculate, you know, the manpower associated with any, you know, future policy that the board might set. The board would need to set the policy for this irrigation system registration and the processes that would involve that. At this point, it just allows for that understanding of who has a system and us to allow registration of that system. But as far as the policies and procedures and how that gets implemented is still to be determined.
Thank you.
That's it? I'm done.
All right. Anybody else? Kurt Sears, you got a question or comment?
Laurie, there's a comment about policy. Backflows are not policy. DEP has their set of rules regarding them. So does the plumbing code. They're a required device on irrigation systems. It's not a maybe-can-be. They have to be there in every irrigation system. Whether the town gets into a program of testing, that's different, but they are, they are required. And you could interpret the plumbing code to say they need, if they are testable, they need to be tested on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. All right, let's, let's go on to the next article, which is...
Article 19, Water Supply Protection, Open Space Acquisition.
Water Supply Protection, Open Space Acquisition. Go ahead.
This is a long one. Take a breath. To see if the town will vote to pursue it to the Community Preservation Act, General Law 44B, and other applicable authorities to purchase or take by eminent domain certain parcels of property totaling 9.6 acres located on Higgins-Crawell Road. Assessors map 54, Parcels 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35, and assessors map 74, Parcels 1, 2, 3, and 4. Said property to be managed by the Yarmouth Board of Water Commissioners and used exclusively for water supply protection and land conservation purposes pursuant to Massachusetts 40, Section 39B, and 41, and Article 7 of the Amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution, and to fund such purpose, transfer some of money available to community preservation funds, and transfer some of funds from DBW Water Division Fund balance in future, further to authorize a select board or any other entity to accept and expend grants, including funds under the Drinking Water Supply Protection Chapters 312 and Acts of 2008, Section 2A, 2,200, and to 7,017, and Chapter 209, Acts of 2018, Section 2A, 2,000 to 7,0072. An assist in the purchase of said property consistent with the total cost is disstated by the DWSP application as amended and to further authorize the select board to negotiate any all agreements and instruments associated with the purchase further authorize the select board to grant or accept perpetual, perpetual restrictions limited to the use of the property as aforesaid. The Board of Selectmen recommends 5 to 0. Finance Committee recommends 4 to 0. Community Preservation Committee will recommend from the floor. It's my understanding they voted to recommend recently. This article would provide funding necessary to move forward with the acquisition of almost 10 acres of vacant undeveloped land located on Higgins-Crawell Road. The land has been approved for 10 units of single-family housing. The acquisition is in keeping with the goals of the town's open space and recreation plan, as well as the water master plan, which recommends the town consider acquiring properties within 1,000 feet of existing wells. Acquisition is property will help protect our drinking water supply. And there is a map there showing well number 24. I believe the circle is the primary zone of 400 feet. It's not the 1,000 feet. And the lots are shown there along Higgins-Crawell Road across from ME Small School.
The chairman? The, the property is currently owned by the Diocese of Fall River, and it's, it's been appraised by the town at, if I remember correctly, a million five. And we have entered into a, into an agreement to purchase the property, subject to town meeting approval, well under that 1.5 million.
Should be pointed out as well that there is $300,000 in a Massachusetts Drinking Water Supply Program grant, which further defrays that cost.
Would it be good to have an additional slide to update the status then in terms of that funding and the fact that offers have been?
There's some CPC funding.
Yeah, all right.
Funding is well in place. All right, any questions or comments? All right, we're going to go to Article 20, CPA Historic Resource Projects.
Article 20, CPA Restore, Historic Resource Projects, Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0, Community Preservation Committee recommend from the floor, I believe they voted to recommend this already, to see if the town will vote to transfer inappropriate to following sums of money from the Community Preservation Act for historic preservation purposes, appropriate to Community Development Department to fund and design engineering plan for the rehabilitation of the historic barn at Taylor Bray Farm in Yarmouth Port. $50,000 from the historic reserve. So it's a total of $50,000. The article will provide for professional services needed to meet design and engineering requirements for Phase II rehabilitation at the Taylor Bray Farm, including internal and external finishes. Professional services include site survey, civil engineering permitting, and mechanical system design required to develop bid specifications to carry out Phase II improvements to complete the rehabilitation of this historic barn, which is an integral component of the Taylor Bray Farm. And there are photos of the ongoing work as part of this project.
$50,000 for design and engineering.
Correct.
That's what's on the menu. All right. Any questions? Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Article 21, Appointment to the Board of Directors of the Mid-Cape Ice Arena. This is, the next article, very, it's an, to gain authorization. But go ahead, Bill.
Article 21, to see if the town will vote to endorse the select board's appointment of a town resident to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for Mid-Cape Ice Arena, incorporated in accordance with the bylaws of such corporation, or take any action other relative thereto. The Board of Selectmen recommends 5 to 0. This is not a finance article, so the Finance Committee did not vote on this one. The original deed from the town of Dennis, it is the explanation, to the Mid-Cape Ice Arena. Tony Cantarina provides the agency must use reasonable efforts to allow occasional use of facility for activities other than skating by the Dennis Recreation Commission, the Yarmouth Recreation Committee, and Dennis, Yarmouth Regional High School, at no charge or nominal charge. Additionally, the bylaws of the Mid-Cape Ice Arena provide that the Yarmouth Selectmen may appoint a member to the Board of Directors. This article seeks to provide town meeting authorization for the Board of Selectmen to make an appointment to the Board of Directors at the Mid-Cape Ice Arena.
I just want to add to that, the organizing documents of the, Tony Cantarina authorized us to appoint a representative, but we don't have anything internally without our own bylaws that allow that appointment. So this is just to cure that problem. We have appointed in the past, and then we raised questions as to, well, do we really have the authority to do that? So this will eliminate that conflict. Okay? That was 21. I don't think there's any real questions on that one. Let's go to 22, Zoning for Village Centers Overlay District.
As with the other ordinance, the actual ordinance is in the warrant book and not in the presentation, so people will refer to the page as indicated. Zoning for Village Center Districts Overlay VCOD, Article 22, Board of Selectmen will recommend from the floor. Planning Board recommends 4 to 1. To see if the town will vote to amend various sections of zoning bylaw to modify certain provisions related to the Village Centers Overlay District with new language, shown in bold and italics, and that's referring to the document and the warrant as follows, or take any action thereto. There is an amendment to this, so I don't know if we want to defer to the chair of the planning board and the town planner to go through that rather than reading the explanation.
Why don't you both come up front?
Madam?
So we have the chair of the planning board, Joanne Crowley. And we have Kathy Williams, our town planner, who's going to talk to us about an amendment to 22.
The, the planning board held their public hearing on October 5, and they also presented the article as written in the warrant to the Board of Selectmen on October 8. the article as written in the warrant to the Board of Selectmen on October 18th. And in both meetings, there was some concern expressed about Items 1 and 2, which would basically just have allowed duplexes as another style of housing located within the Village Center Overlay District. But there was concerns that this change might be perceived as being something more substantial, and it might raise questions and debate about an otherwise minor housekeeping amendment. So to expedite the passage of the article, the Planning Board voted to amend the article as printed in the warrant by deleting Items 1 and 2, and you see them there in their entirety. The remainder of changes within the article would remain. I don't know if you want us to review what those changes are, or if...
So why don't you tell us what the effect is of those deletions?
Right now duplexes are not an allowed style of housing within the Village Center Overlay District. So right now, multifamily is allowed. The density is set, but duplexes as a style are not allowed. So you'd have to have a triplex or something larger within your multifamily or mixed-use development. By taking this out, you just would not be able to... It would remain exactly as it is today, where duplexes are not allowed.
Okay, good. And I do remember that concern being...
I think Dorcas had it.
Pretty substantial, yeah.
And going back to the original explanation within the context of the suggested amendment, that's up there now.
And these items are merely... They're really housekeeping items. It's important for the Planning Board to revisit, when we can, certain detailed elements in the zoning bylaw and try to make it a little bit more flexible, particularly as it relates to FEMA flood zones and other seemingly kind of stricter architectural requirements on the kind of windows that might be allowed in the VCODs. So that's... The balance of the Article 22 is mostly addressing those housekeeping items in the VCOD district. I would add that the Board... The Planning Board, after our meeting with you, voted unanimously to endorse an amendment from the floor. And I believe we have a slide for that. And I will be making that amendment from the floor at town meeting, a special town meeting on Tuesday.
So that's it? That's the only change, is the duplexes?
That's correct.
Pretty simple, right?
I was hoping so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Why don't you stay there, because you're coming up again. Chris?
I have to tell you that as a resident, and then also as a usually pretty active town meeting attendee, I get very confused when we have references to things like VC1, VC2, VC3, etc. In other words, you don't really know where in the town that these zones are physically. Good. I think that would be a very, very important thing, particularly because you're citing within this article that the changes are specifically... Some of them are earmarked for VC1. And so I think really having that up at the front and maybe doing a little bit of a preliminary statement of physically where these are, because that's kind of a hard... Actually, to tell you the truth, that's a hard diagram even to see. So even just a quick verbal as to what 1, 2, 3, 4 are would help, I think, for a better understanding sometimes of the articles. So that... Because I think particularly in the warrant, when I just see these things listed, I'm like, okay, where... What are we talking about? And why, you know, why VC1 and not the others? You know, that kind of thing. So thank you. That's just a point of clarification.
It is our intent to show this slide, Chris.
But I also think that that illustration is so small when it shows on a screen, like right now, even now, it's kind of hard to know geographically where that is, you know, in communities. So even some statement of what 1 is, where it starts maybe to goes to what streets or something, and then these are all basically along 28, but 1 is, you know, between, you know, Camp Street and wherever, and then 2, you know, that kind of thing. That's just a quick clarification, I think, would help for clarification for everybody at the town meeting. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
The Planning Board and the Board of Appeals have a language unto themselves. And some people think it's a foreign language. And I think sometimes it is. But they're used to that diction and those labels and those locations, and, you know, your point's well taken. The rest of us, we need some problem.
Yeah, I speak French and Latin, and I still didn't understand what the letters were.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Chris. So that's a pretty simple amendment on 22. Does anybody have anything else on 22 before we go to the next article? All right, let's go to Article 23, Bill.
This is a zoning petition article, Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws by modifying certain provisions related to the accessory dwelling units as followed, or take any other action relative thereto, as indicated with all the ordinances, you would refer to the page in your warrant book for detail. We don't have an explanation for this, per se. Board of Selectmen will recommend from the floor. Planning Board will recommend from the floor. Again, it's a petition article.
Okay, has the Planning Board voted on this?
Yes, we have.
Okay, can you tell us about that?
Yes, it was at a public hearing on November 2nd. We voted, and there were five members in attendance, and the vote was four to not recommend and one abstention.
Four, 0, 1, against?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that this article's been withdrawn by the petitioner.
It has not.
It has not been withdrawn?
It has not.
Okay.
No, there was an email... I... Let me say this much. I think the Board of Selectmen, probably in the Planning Board, has got to be prepared for whatever occurs. There was an email that kind of indicated that the article would be withdrawn, but you really don't know that's going to happen until it happens.
If I may, Mr. Stone, I'll just read the beginning of the letter that was sent to me and members of the Planning Board. In coordination with the petitioner, this was sent by the group Housing to Protect Cape Cod, a new housing advocacy group. In coordination with the petitioner, and the petitioner is Sarah Coles, is the lead name on the petition. We are writing to let you know that the petitioner is in discussions with the town moderator about the appropriate course of action to postpone the citizen petition article at this month's special town meeting. With advice from legal counsel, the petitioners have considered the viability of introducing amendments on the floor. Given the changes needed to address the concerns from planning board members and citizens alike, and the logistics of renumbering sections, editing other references, we felt it would be too laborious for the moderator and too confusing for town meeting voters to consider a bylaw with live changes on the floor. Although we believe we've been able to pass this petition on overwhelming support, we heard privately from Yarmouth residents, and we also want this to be right for the town. So that was the letter we received on the day of the public hearing, November 2nd. And the petitioner... The representatives of the petitioners, Housing to Protect Cape Cod, were there. And at that time, they indicated this is their direction for a special town meeting on Tuesday. They have continued to actually work with the moderator and also, I think, through town council on the actual wording of a motion at town meeting. So they have gone a little step further to try and see how they would do that, but still protect their rights to bring it back at an annual town meeting.
Yeah, I'm assuming, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that you don't have a problem in principle with that if they were to somehow defer action on this and bring it back.
I can't speak for the Planning Board as a whole, Mr. Stone, but we have it on our agenda for November 16th to begin discussions as to all the next steps the Planning Board intends to take, to review and look at our own accessory apartment zoning bylaw, and see what changes the Planning Board wants to bring forward. So we will be doing that next Wednesday after the town meeting.
Can you give us just an overview of the... Not every little thing, but the major objections or concerns that you had about the bylaws proposed?
Again, I don't want to represent all of the opinions of the members of the Board, because our views and opinions were very different. There were Board members who were very much in support of the petitioner's article, and there were Board members who were very concerned about it. In general, there were some provisions that were highlighted by those Board members who were not happy with it being a petitioned article. I, myself, if you were to review any of the video, was concerned that zoning by petition is always dangerous. I said this before at our meeting when we presented on October 19th. And so there were those concerns that zoning by petition generally makes it difficult because of the language that we use and the legal mumbo jumbo, if you will, as to how a bylaw is put together and sections. So there were all sorts of issues that we had, I had personally as a lifelong bureaucrat, that this was going to be really difficult to fit in and/or amend in any way that made any kind of sense. So we offered the petitioner to say, look, we hear you, and we hear the public, and we're going to pick this up as part of our agenda, and that's what we're going to do. But there were voices on both sides, very much in support and very much against on the Planning Board.
How will this play out if it goes forward? And there are multiple amendments made from the town floor by the petitioners. How is the Planning Board going to be able to weigh in and give input to the public?
We will, if that in fact happens. We've been through several meetings with this, and I trust that we would be prepared to address each of the amendments. We've heard what some of the amendments are, that some of those in the public are opposed to the petition. And we also understand some of the comments that have been made for those who are in favor of the petition. And we heard them all at the two public hearings, and hopefully we might be able to address them. I don't have... Personally, I don't have a strategy, and I can't represent the position of the Board, to be offering live amendments on the floor of town meeting that represent a position of the Planning Board. We will not be in that position to counter amendment, I don't think. I don't know how we could do that logistically.
I don't either.
I don't know how the town... I don't know how the town moderator could... Or town council could properly negotiate that kind of...
Based on the limited information we have, and we're supposed to make a recommendation on this article, how are we to do that?
Go ahead, Kathy.
I guess I think it gets back to...
Can I just say one other thing? Based on the limited information we have as to what the Planning Board's position is, other than a generic, we don't approve it, how are we to make an informed decision as to what our recommendation should be? Kathy?
I think, as you well know, writing zoning is very intricate, and words really, really matter. There's some aspects in here where they say you may rent up to 12 months of the year. No, you shall only rent up to 12 months a year. That's a big difference.
Huge difference.
And it says things like, you shall not rent for a week or daily, but it doesn't say you can't rent seasonally. So if we really want to get what we want to get out of ADUs, which is year-round housing for people, we need to be sure that the words are right. And the way that you get the words right is through that balance process that happens through the Planning Board, where we hear the petitioners, we hear the neighborhoods, the residents, we hear everybody. And what the Planning Board's really good at is coalescing all of that information and trying to put it into a bylaw and build consensus that could get passed at town meeting. So any type of petition zoning bylaw in general is very, very, very difficult, unless it's an extremely small, minor word change or something. But this is a significant change to the bylaw that we have now.
Another example, if I could just... I have my notes from a couple of them. The petitioners would allow an LLC to be involved in having an accessory dwelling unit. So we talked about that. Someone comes in, buys property, they're in LLC. They raise the house, the little cottage that's there, and they build an accessory dwelling unit behind it, and then they rent out both of them.
They would allow both to be...
One would be an accessory.
Right. They no longer had the resident requirement that we have in our accessory apartment and some other towns have. You could rent out both units. So essentially, you could have an off-Cape investor come in, take a small cottage, tear it down, build a house, and then build another accessory unit, and then rent them out. So you might have off-Cape landlords now who may not be as invested in our neighborhoods as someone who owns the property and has a small accessory dwelling unit that they're renting out on their property. So things like that. There's also nothing in there that prevented any condominiumization of the individual buildings. They said the land needed to be in common ownership, but it never required that the dwellings, the actual buildings and structures, not be condominiumized. In addition to some of the other issues, obviously, just where it would get inserted into the bylaw, what would happen to Section 407, I really think a zoning change of this magnitude isn't something that the Board of Selectmen should be supporting. And I don't think doing it on the fly through red line edits at a town meeting is appropriate either. The Planning Board spends months and months and months, eight, nine, 10, red line drafts of something, and now we're going to be looking at it and making a decision on something this important through red line edits at a special town meeting? That's not the process we should be supporting. We can get there. As Joanne mentioned, I think we understand that we're at this end of the pendulum, and they wanted to be at that end. So let's meet in the middle, see what we can do in order to loosen some of the restrictions that we have, but also have provisions in there that protect our neighborhoods, a lot of the comments that we did hear during our public hearing.
I mean, I think the fact that you get rid of the owner-occupied requirement in and of itself would be enough for me not to support it, because you're really running the danger of turning a residential neighborhood into basically a rental district. I mean, I'm thinking about where I live. If my next-door neighbor built an accessory apartment, and he moved, and he had two rentals, I don't think I'd be too happy with that situation.
There's also no minimum lot sizes.
Because I didn't buy into that neighborhood for that, and vice versa. So I...
No minimum lot size was another concern. Parking was a concern. Is it on-street parking, off-street parking? Well, I need more parking. I'll just park on my lawn. I'll just park on my lawn, or just asphalt my lawn.
Yeah.
There were some real basic concerns that the vast majority of Board members had with this article. The notion of accessory apartment units, I think, by and large, the Board... And we have it on our agenda. We are going to look at it. It's important. We're hearing from the citizens of the town. We're hearing from the petitioner. That's important. We heard from you, that's important. So I... But I think there's a right way to do it, and we would like to try to do it the right way. And I feel very strongly that zoning by petition is wrong.
Yeah, I listen... I didn't... I wasn't able to stay for the whole hearing, but I heard most of it. I didn't get to stay for the vote. But it seemed like people were trying to accommodate each other and vet out, you know, what the areas of concern were and what the positives were. And I personally do believe that you could come up, you know, if given the time, with a good, fair bylaw that meets the basic intent of what is trying to be accomplished, to provide some more housing. And I think the professional input that you can provide as a board, and with Kathy's help, is important. I wouldn't... I'm a lawyer. I wouldn't attempt to draft all that stuff. I really wouldn't. You need a certain level of expertise in that area. David Reed could do it, blindfolded, but I couldn't. You know? So, okay, anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're done with our... Oh, Chris. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
How could you possibly done without Chris commenting? I have been very actively attending, monitoring and watching Planning Board and taking a look at this petitioned article. First of all, I'd like to commend both Kathy and Joanne tonight for really doing a very good job of articulating and summarizing for you the kinds of issues that have been brought up by a variety of people attending those meetings. And I think... And I think that one of the concerns I have, as I said, having been a seasoned town meeting member, not member, but attendee, is to have a petitioned article of this nature brought as the last article of the evening in a November town meeting, not even the annual, just struck me as incredibly kind of not judicious, let's put it that way. Secondly, I think one of the Planning Board meetings the other night was absolutely fascinating to me because of the contrast between the successful reporting of the work that was done on the bylaw that created the seasonal employee housing. It was absolutely remarkable and you had everybody from the police chief, the fire department and everyone there talking about the fact that having had a process in which the Planning Board, along with a whole group of people who were going to be involved with this process, had constructed that bylaw and then went through a system in which it has both a sunset clause in it, but it also has a system in which they were monitoring reporting and had this mandated reporting coming back. It was extraordinary to see that and then to see the contrast of this being proposed as it's suddenly written by someone else, by a group of people who I guess haven't been happy with the fact the town hasn't done something before by this. But I would maintain that you've got a lot of very hardworking town employees and a lot of people on boards who have spent a lot of hours of their time in working in ways that are good for this town and really taking into consideration the issues and the needs. And I would say that this whole issue of something by right with no control and the issues that they raised about ownership, parking, the density, the, the lot sizes, everything that they brought up tonight or all of it. And the idea, you know, having sat through town meetings when we've had to have people run up to the moderator with a couple of ideas on how we're going to amend an article, to have that happening at that hour by a group on a petitioned article is absolutely a nightmare. In other words, I think they'd be one of the first people getting up there to say, I want to, I want to move for indefinite postponement, which would put it off for two years. I think that if they would think considerably and, and all of you not support this right now, make them come back and do a work, a really substantial piece of study and work and cooperation with the Planning Board and with the town employees and that, we could come forward with an article for ADUs that would be much more appropriate at the annual town meeting when it should be considered. I've always regarded the November meetings as the times when you're picking up with pieces of funding like the $712 or whatever that didn't get done last spring that we needed to do to pay the bills, is that's the time for it in November in the dark. I mean, I served on the subcommittee where we tried to look at how do we increase participation at town meetings. And so I'd like to commend the work they did tonight in explaining to you the issues because I think they do reflect the kinds of concerns and the number of citizens and the people who I've been with at these meetings and the fact that as a petitioned article to this suddenly created group to come in to do this to us, I'm sorry, is not right. And so thank you. But I thank Joanne and Kathy tonight.
Anyone else? All right, let's, we, the only other thing we have to do is assignment of articles. Mark, did you have something on this particular amendment?
My understanding is, is the same as Selectman Smith, that they're going to withdraw it. And I think if, if indeed that, that should become known soon, then we should support it. So I think that's the direction it's headed in.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see it get withdrawn, get worked on, get revised and brought back at annual.
So, like I said, that's been communicated to us, so I think we should support that and then let them work it out.
I mean, I just hope that's the way it plays out. It's a meeting, we're not going to know until it happens.
I thought, I thought their message was pretty clear, so maybe I'm missing something. Right now would be a good time to sort of assign the articles. Now, do, do we have information? I mean, Dorcas is, is she going to be like day-to-day? Is she going to be, is she going to be able to make town meeting next week?
I believe she is. I didn't, I didn't get anything that indicated that she wouldn't. Now, prior to the email I got about tonight's meeting, she did respond to say that she would be available for the tour of the school on Friday.
Okay. Well, that's good.
But that pre...
Right.
That came before tonight, so...
Yeah, we don't know.
She didn't say anything about canceling that. So my, my guess is this is just a temporary thing, it could probably be there, but we'll, we'll get an update. Okay, so we got, how many we got?
So I had an idea on that. If you, you take a look at the articles overall, I think that the Community Preservation had asked if they can do the motion on Article 20.
20 for Community? Okay, so we got 20 for CPC, yep. And then we got this petitioned article. We're not going to be involved in that one.
Right, and then maybe you could have the Planning Board do 22.
Somebody else is going to take the lead on that. So that was that, 23?
That's 23.
23's petitioned, okay.
And then, and then if you have the Planning Board do 22, that would make it so that...
Yeah, Planning Board will do that.
You're down to 20 articles and you can do four each.
That's great.
And then in case if Dorcas doesn't...
Then we just add one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's simple.
I think that's perfect. They, they had originally expressed interest in doing the explanation, but I think they'd be happy to, I can't, you know, I think they'd be happy to do the whole thing. So that's great.
Okay, so Dan, you, you had something, you wanted to do the first four, you said?
I don't have any particular strong feelings, but I'm happy you did the first four.
We'll give Dan one through four then.
Inside your motion book, there's a table of contents in the front end to sort of follow along with the space to write the...
And then we got five through... Five through eight. Anybody want five through eight?
Sure, why not?
Okay, so Peter will do five through eight. Brings us through nine through, let's see, nine through...
12.
12. You want to do nine through 12 or the other ones, Mark? It's up to you.
Nine to 12, it's fine.
All right, Mark, it's nine to 12. So let's see what I got here. 13, 14, 15. 16, is it? 13, 14, 13 through 16. So Dorcas, if she can do it, will go 17, 18...
19 and 21.
19, no, 20 CPC, isn't it?
Right, and 21, yep.
And 21. So Dorcas has 17, 18, 19 and 21, correct?
Yep, 19 and 21. 19 and 21.
So if Dorcas is not able to take it, then what we'll do is we'll just go in the same rotation. Dan will pick up 17, Peter will pick up 18, Mark will pick up 19, and I'll take 21.
Sounds good.
How's that? All right. So we're covered either way.
That's great.
So I hope this is helpful to people out there. I hope the video gets posted and it's clean and it's understandable and, and that the...
Exactly.
That it's, that what we've discussed tonight comes out clearly. I want to thank everybody that participated in this. Bill, thanks very much for the slide presentations and the work that you've done. Thanks to the board members and to our town administrator and to the people who came here in attendance and participated, especially Jeff, Jeff who gave a lot of explanations to the various water articles. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you.